What do you need?
Uh, for eight pieces. And then, um, we should know, we resolve this, even though it's not technically our task. It could have been, right? It could have been. We were cautious. I think it fits the definition.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Good night, Mark.
Good night.
Good job.
Thank you. Good night.
It, it does, it could have been.
Um, it was about, Paul came out, uh...
Cold and wet.
I don't know.
Really cold and wet.
Oh, was it, was it a position?
It is.
It is.
They were talking.
I think that a hundred-foot man, you're not getting a hundred-foot man, a hundred-foot man. A human, a hundred-foot human.
I brought it.
Cause they're holding sand, you know. Oh.
All right. Hey, hey, um, round them up.
Charles, what about my rubber thing?
I want to put like the rubber strips down in that, you know, that little where?
The executive session, man. Do we have appointments? I thought we did. Wait, what's this?
Can I sue my statute of rights?
Oh, hell, do I have that? So we have no appointments? Okay. We're gonna do executive session right after, right before, between courtesy of the floor and county executive report. Don't bother sitting down. I call the county council meeting, uh, February seventh to order. Mr. Cusick will have us to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Very good. Zembo, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cusick.
Present.
Mr. D.
Here.
Mrs. Cororal.
Three months.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. La.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Bargo Heffner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mr. Rint.
Here.
All present except Mrs. Cororal.
Thank you. Uh, I have no one signed up, uh, for courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone here who would like? Oh, I'm sorry. I have to do the minutes. My apology. It's this extensive agenda in front of me. Reading ahead. Uh, do we have an approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve by acclamation, Mr. President.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good. Now, courtesy of the floor. Anyone who would like to address counsel? I have no one on the list. Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll, uh, dispense with that. And, uh, what we're going to do is at this mo- time, it's six, uh, thirty-three, we're gonna have an executive session, and the topic is potential litigation, uh, with the county executive. So I'd like a motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we're going into executive session, six thirty-three. No pens, no pencils.
No notes.
No notes.
We're following.
To be clear, this is discussion with the executive about litigation, uh, discussion of litigation with the executive.
That's correct.
Okay. That is recorded.
I, you're talking to a guy that is not feeling informed. I just heard what you heard.
Okay.
John, I mean, no problems. Hey, I voted no. It was, it was the greatest agreement ever done. All right. Get everybody in here so we can adjourn.
As Ron, I'll use the telephone. Remember that?
That's it. All right. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order, uh, at six forty-nine, uh, after our executive session. And on the agenda is the county executive report.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am pleased to, uh, report that we have, uh, taken, uh, final acceptance of, uh, Bridge two oh five, which brings us to two bridges in the rapid bridge replacement program, um, which hasn't been defined by rapidity yet. Um, but we have two bridges that have been accepted as, as completed, and I thought you'd like to know that. Um, I, I need to make you aware of, of a, a boiling and roiling issue that, that is, um, very disconcerting, that, um, someone who was talking about out-of-town landlords today sparked my memory to, to speak with you about this. Um, one of the problems, um, that we have inherited, um, in the area agency on aging is many of our senior centers are inadequate to the needs of the senior centers. Um, we're talking about basic stuff. We've been buying fuel at one of the places because the landlord refused to fill the fuel tanks. Um, in other places, drains don't work. Uh, you, we, we have hot water issues. There are, there are serious, serious issues in multiple locations. And, um, we're, you know, the, the county solicitor, Ms. Rudis, uh, Ms. Wandelowski, Kim Nichols, who's responsible for these centers, they, they have been working tirelessly to try and get these resolved. But in some cases, we're in multi-year leases. In one lease, we're in a s- uh, in a lease for another six or seven years. It is potential, uh, I don't know, six hundred thousand dollars in rent we might owe. Uh, these, these are not small issues, and I, I'm bringing them to your attention because I do not, um, want to, uh, approach you in the future with resolutions, um, that we've made that are hard. But you, you have to understand, we have to act to protect the senior citizens who are coming to these, uh, coming to these centers, uh, for their lunches and recreation. So we can't have them coming to, to, uh, centers that, um, that are inadequate. So we're working on it. And i- in, in the future, I'll, we'll have other reports, and I, uh, Ms. Wandelowski, I'm sure in hu- future human services meetings, we'll be addressing this, and, um, please know that we're, we're on it, and, uh, now you know. Um, I owe you an apology. Uh, I, the, um, the Gracestale survey, the eleven deficiencies caught, has caused me to recognize I made a mistake with respect to Gracestale last year, not firing, uh, Premier as soon as I took office. This, this survey, uh, that we went through, um, with Premier is, make no mistake about it, the Premier's responsibility. It was Premier who, uh, ran us through the mock survey on a new survey. This survey was created based upon the Auditor General going all over Pennsylvania, auditing nursing homes and finding problems in home after home after home. So the Department of Health came up with a new survey, and this is the first time we ever went through that survey. And I, and I'm very disappointed in how that played out. And what we have to do is look at the facts of why this happened to us, okay? Premier was our manager, and we're a two-star facility. Now, keep in mind, our budget for twenty eighteen was six hundred and seventy beds. Susquehview, a facility Premier, Premier used to manage and is managed by a former Premier employee now. Two-star facility, like Gracestale. Two stars, right now. Pleasant Valley Manor, another former Premier, we, we understand that, uh, Monroe County may have just ended their contract with Premier. A one-star facility, hundred, uh, uh, so, Gracestale, two stars, Premier. Susquehview, two stars, Premier. Pleasant Valley, one star, Premier. You seeing a trend? In this, uh, in this survey, Susquehview and Pleasant Valley have also undergone survey. Susquehview, a hundred and forty-six beds. Remember, Gracestale, six hundred and eighty-eight beds with a budget of six hundred and seventy. It'll be six sixty-five for twenty eighteen, but, or twenty nineteen, rather, but in, uh, twenty eighteen, six seventy. Susquehview, a hundred and forty-six beds, nine deficiencies. Gracestale had eleven. Pleasant Valley, a hundred and seventy-four beds. Remember, Gracestale budget, six hundred and seventy beds. When the state came, there were six hundred and sixty-eight people living in Gracestale. Pleasant Valley, a hundred and seventy-four beds, eleven deficiencies. So Gracestale was Premier's best property. Gracestale was Premier's best property with three times the folks. Actually, I think, considering how we were being weighted down by our outside management, we did pretty well. But this story, i- it has more facts, and, and, and the people who were there, uh, and the people who are in the know are here for you tonight. You don't have to just take a speech from me. I mean, they'll give you the facts when you ask the questions. But they use a, a system for tracking resident care called Cantata at Gracestale. Cantata is a system that was brought to Gracestale by Mr. D. Millard Freeman, who was Premier employee, who was managing Gracestale. This system, Cantata, was used in another Premier facility when it was brought to Gracestale. Five of our deficiencies of the eleven can be directly or indirectly linked to this Cantata system, which is why we're coming before you to ask us, despite the fact that we didn't have it in the budget, to let us go out and get a new system. Five of these deficiencies. So I gotta tell you, ladies and gentlemen, it's obvious to me, based on the facts, this survey's Premier's survey. Uh, Mr. Mr. Soto checked out in April. How do we know? He checked out in April. Because as Ms. Stewart, uh, i- is analyzing, Stewart King is analyzing, uh, the data that's provided by Quapian and, and other, uh, and other, and other data sources at Gracestale, that, that the, uh, data back to April doesn't make any sense. April and going forward. It just doesn't make any sense. So not only were we, were we poorly managed, we weren't managed at all. So again, I apologize for not firing them as soon as I took office.
That's the extent of your report tonight, sir. Thank you. Uh, I, we, um, well, under new business, we're going to, just a couple of things. We'll, we'll address this in more detail if you have any questions. Uh, it'll come up. I have no old business. Is there any old business council wants to address? Seeing none, we'll move to new business. I have no new business. It's only the only times I can ever remember this, on the agenda. Uh, that being said, we get jammed at some meetings, and so I had a discussion with the administration in, uh, the last few days about possibility of going over a couple of things that we may not, can do now and not get jammed at a future meeting. One of them is with Mr. Barron. It's regarding the, uh, sale, uh, the purchase, I should say, the Human Services building. And he has, uh, some, uh, we're, we're gonna need to pass a resolution, and I'm gonna let him explain it. We don't have it in front of us. We'll have it at the next meeting, probably, but he won't be here. He'll, he'll be, as the Norco money man is known to do, he'll, he'll be off somewhere. So anyway, uh, would you, uh, illuminate us on, on this topic?
So, um, Article thirteen of the Administrative Code requires when you procure, sell, or do anything with county property, you need to get two independent appraisals. Now, we are in a contract with, uh, North Star, and the purchase price of the Human Service building is contractually built in, the fourteen point six, approximately fourteen point six million, um, that we will buy the building for in March. That being said, um, we're going to put together a resolution to ask county council, and Article thirteen supposes there might be opportunities to do this, um, that we'd ask council to waive that requirement. It is a needless expense, um, knowing that the purchase price is going to be fourteen point six million, um, already. There's not a likelihood for negotiation. Um, and we've had our assessment people, we do have an appraiser who didn't do an official appraisal, but we know the building is, uh, it's a good deal we're getting at fourteen point six million. Therefore, I would ask council to, uh, through resolution, waive those, uh, the, that requirement. It will save us money and allow us to get to closing much faster.
Thank you. And I, I did want him to speak since he'll, he is here now, in case there are any questions on this issue. I think it's pretty straightforward, and you're right, it's blocked in, so I guess the, you're gonna work with, oh, I'm sorry. Kevin, tell me.
I just don't know if it direct, it doesn't, I guess it does directly go to sales, but, um, you said there's no negotiation with North Star. Do we get as a county kind of one last walkthrough and, and, and see? Do we get as a county kind of one last walkthrough and see if there's anything we need to tune up on the building before we take it over? And for example, the sidewalks out front, I mean, they're not good.
So we have a triple net lease, and the maintenance of the building is our responsibility. Now, you'll, you'll remember that council did borrow 15 million for the building, so there's the potential for money to be left over after closing that can be dedicated to that building in future budgets. We do know that there are some things in the building that may need maintenance, and we plan on maintaining the building. However, we are in the process of getting as-built drawings for the building, sort of, I had a conversation today with John Kingsley, formerly of the county, now with North Star, and I said, I want the owner's manuals for the building, and he's going to make sure I get those, like buying a used car. We test drove it a little bit, now we're going to own it instead of lease it. We'd like the owner's manuals to come with it as well. Best analogy I could come up with.
Are there any other questions about the used car we're buying?
The used car.
Yeah, I think we need an audit of what's going on in that building before we purchase. I believe we need to go through and make sure that everything, we took, we did, we were tasked with all the maintenance on that building. We paid for all that. And I think if we're going to buy the building, we should at least know if everything is up to snuff.
We've done the routine maintenance on the building, and it's been done through Issue Track, so council can definitely see all that. There's no issues with the building right now that I know of that would prevent us from going to close and purchase the building.
Except for those sidewalks.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's, excuse me.
No, go right ahead.
And I don't know if that's necessarily a maintenance issue. I would argue that that concrete was not poured correctly, and that's why it cracked that badly. That ground moved. It wasn't properly compacted when they poured that sidewalk. And I mean, I would just think we'd go to Mr. Gentile, and at least, you guys know the negotiations, but I, I can't help but think that is not maintenance when you have a building relatively new. That sidewalk should not have cracked like that.
Is there, if I may, usually when something's sold, there's a walkthrough or a set of codes that go through, check on violations, things of that nature. Mr. Gentile, aware of anything like that?
Not that I know of. And we have occupancy for the building, so we have a currency for the building.
Okay. Let me ask you this, because, and tying in with this, I wasn't here when this, and it is a triple net lease. I understand there were some issues right out of the gate with the building, especially with the front walks and whatnot, to your point. But, I mean, we're sort of in a position where if we don't buy it within, I don't know the exact timeframe we have, this window, our alternative is to keep leasing it, and God, I don't want to keep leasing that building. I mean, I don't know what provisions are allowed to us, whether a walk, but I mean, I sort of feel we're almost, hopefully we get manuals to want, but I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're just sort of going to probably be buying it the way it is right now.
Well, we live there.
Yeah, we live, I mean.
So we know what the problem is.
Right. But I mean, I don't think there's any recourse, even if we are aware of some problems, am I correct or incorrect, that we could probably go to him with?
I don't know what it would cost us to pay the bond back.
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Dees. I mean, so it was a triple net lease, I mean, I think we can argue that the terms weren't as good in our favor, but there's no doubt if it was a regular lease, it would have cost more, you know, so.
I understand the rationale why it was done for the cost factor at the beginning.
Right, so it makes us responsible to cover those things, you know.
Yes, always in the lease.
It's cost us $100,000 a year. But the deal that we all, at least not this council, the council in the past have talked about, was that the $14 million bill was going to be worthwhile at the end of the lease.
I don't think it is.
It should never have been set up the way it was, but the fact that it was, it was better to get out of it, okay, rather than allow it to go on. So, but $100,000 a year is a large nut to crack.
Yeah, I just had one question for Mr. Barron. You mentioned the transfer. Is there a real estate transfer tax that we will have to pay in addition to that, and have you factored that into the cost?
I haven't seen the closing sheets. I do not believe that there's, I mean, we're going to have to settle up certain things, like we're paying March's rent, there's going to be a discount period, so Mr. Corriere and I have been working on that with North Star's council. There is probably going to be a HUD sheet, and we're going to have to settle up all those particulars. I also know that North Star has a mortgage on the property, so that they're going to have to settle that lien up as well.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Barron on this topic? If not, we'll excuse him, and thank you very much.
We need a resolution for this?
I think you're going to be speaking with Linda, and we'll get a resolution together for the next meeting.
Yeah, you will, you will have one together for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, next, the executive, I properly discussed his concern regarding what had happened at Gracestale and the report we got back, and we all share his concern, especially with some of the things we saw, but because of time at the last Human Services Committee meeting, we really weren't able to get into too much about Gracestale. And I've had opportunities this past week to speak with the Chairman of Human Services Committee, Ms. Vargo Hefner, and she agreed, and in discussion with the administration, we have gotten, we have the Gracestale, there's many of the Gracestale folks here, and we can have a, get into more detail on where we are now and some of the plans going forward. So if you would like to, Sue, if you want to come up, Wondoloski, kick it off.
Just briefly.
Okay.
Just briefly.
No problem.
Thank you, by the way, Mr. Heckman and Ms. Vargo Hefner, for the opportunity to come back to council tonight. We would have done this in two weeks, but it was nice to have the opportunity sooner since there was a light agenda tonight. And, you know, I'm sorry that the, in hindsight, the agenda for last month's meeting was overly ambitious, and certainly took longer than expected for the MHEIDP folks leaving us very little time for, for the Gracestale conversation. And we started 25 minutes late for the record. So regardless of whether we have one citation or 11 citations, regardless of the severity of those citations, every one of those we take very seriously. And corrective action plans are, they're required by the state, but those are what we do for each and every citation. So I am going to let Jen go over those in greater detail, and she has some of her folks here, in case there are specific nursing kind of questions or risk management questions that you all would have that would be better answered by someone else. But I just wanted to throw that all out there and let Jen come on up now. So thank you for the opportunity. Wow.
Good evening.
Here goes the tree.
Is that for each of us?
Yes.
Wow, how exciting.
Expect us to read this name?
Just in case.
Just in case.
For your weekend.
Oh, my.
Thank you. Look how they're all in order.
Okay.
Bob's saying to himself, bring it.
No one can blame them. Come and talk to us. Talk to us. I don't know.
Thought you were getting after it.
Not me.
It's okay. It's like, there might be like a whole tree.
All right. So I wanted to come back and explain more of the survey process, and I wanted to explain that Gracestale team by no means takes this survey lightly. We are committed to Gracestale and making sure these deficiencies don't happen again. So I wanted to, I'll get into what's in the files, but I just wanted to go over repeating what Mr. McClure said about the auditor in 2016, the Auditor General was really hammering in to DOH surveyors. They wanted to make sure things were not overlooked. So with that being said, the surveyors since then have been under the gun to make sure that they look and see everything. The three key issues was inadequate review of nursing staff levels, complaint handling, because there was a time where they would not take an anonymous complaint, which they do now. And then they would go over, there wasn't many sanctions against poor-performing nursing homes. So when I came here, one of the first times was to make staffing one of my biggest undertakings. And we have come very far with staffing. Our PPD has been running about 3.36, which is over our budget, but we're working with that to get it down. But I wanted to talk about how the survey process changed. So before, when the surveyors come in, they would start their survey process then. They would meet with us, they would talk to us every day. Well, now it begins in their offices, and they get, it's called a CASPER report from CMS, and it tells them all about our residents and where people score on quality measures. So they usually go with the highest ones. And when we did our mock survey, I went and looked over, and we went narrowed it down to our top 40. So they get this initial pool of residents off of that CASPER report. They come in, and they meet with us briefly, but then they are out on the units. Every day for four days, they are out on the units, looking at everything and everybody, and talking to everyone. So they do a resident interview, they interview the staff, they look at the critical elements, pathways, which is their set of investigative protocols which they need to meet, to make sure it's fair. They observe a first meal, and they will observe other meals if they see anything. They look at unnecessary medications, and they review it to make sure everybody is getting the proper medications. They select more residents to review. So we had 688 residents. They reviewed 72 of them. And when they review those, they will always look at other things that come up. And if that, they see something, then that opens another person up. They observe med passes, interview nurses, record reviews, and they look at all the MDSs. They meet with infectious control nurse, they meet with our Quapi nurse, which is Quality Assurance and Performance Improvement, and they go over what Gracestale is working on. They look at our beneficiary protection notice, notification review, which are letters that are sent out every time somebody goes out to the hospital to make sure they understand about the bed hold policy. They do a kitchen observation. That is one of the first places they hit when they come into the building, and they go and look at everything in our kitchen. Medication administration, medication storage, to make sure everything is properly labeled and stored at the right temperature. They attend a resident council meeting, which Gracestale and its employees are not allowed to attend, so it is a free way to talk without us. They look at sufficient and competent nursing staff review to make sure we do have the numbers to take care of all our residents. And they look at the environment. But when they look at the environment, they try not to duplicate what life safety does, because life safety comes in right after them and looks with maintenance. Then they do an exit. At the exit, they tell us some of the things they found, but we have to wait for the official letter to come from the Department of Health. So our deficiencies, there were five areas and 11 deficiencies. So the first one was for residents' rights. It was FTAG 550. So there were two CNAs who were observed during these dining room meals, who were standing and feeding. That has always been a no-no, that you do that, because you're supposed to encourage them to have the normal dining room experience, like you would at home. You talk to them, you know, eye contact. Unfortunately, they spotted two people who were feeding them while they were standing, and that's looking down on somebody while you feed them. With that, another one for the 550 was a resident was attempting to feed herself, and she was having a difficult time. This is also, food was falling on her chest, and they were observed by the surveyors. Immediately, we got a speech, an OT evaluated was submitted. We reeducated staff on signs that may require resident needs special assistance, adaptive equipment, something. We also reeducated those two CNAs to make sure they know what is right and proper. Then we went into the next FTAG, which was reasonable accommodations of needs or preferences. We had a woman who was in a wheelchair, and her call bell was on her bed, not placed on herself, and she was unable to reach it. The surveyor actually went and got a longer cord for her. We fixed that right away, and we educated staff. The whole unit was educated, and we updated the care cards, and we made sure that everything was in place at that time. We have 604, which is the right to be free from physical restraints. We have a resident who had physical restraints, she was demented, and it was not released in a proper time. So at breakfast, and then I believe in the afternoon, she should have been released from a pelvic restraint, and it was not done. Unit staff was again immediately reeducated, updated care cards, all nursing staff was reeducated on the physician's order and how to follow it. Care plans were updated, and audits were put in place to make sure that, we do this quite frequently, we have nursing staff, aides, supervisors, all looking at these audits, random people, anytime. We also, to the, to the third area, was comprehensive resident-centered care plans. So to develop and implement a comprehensive care plan, we had a resident who was diagnosed with depression and had an order for an antidepressant medication. The care plan had not been updated with the interventions to address the problem area of depression and the use of anti-depression medication. We had another resident who was diagnosed with anxiety and used an anti-anxiety medication. The care plan was, was not developed, nor were the interventions included to address the areas of behavior, anxiety, or the use of psychotropic medication. Resident did not receive, and the third one that falls under there was, a resident did not receive fortified ice cream at meals, which was a physician's order. Then we go to FTAG 657, which is care plan, timing, and revision. So again, resident with the pelvic restraint, which had a care plan, and the care plan failed to include the two recent physician's interventions to release it. Another resident had a recent order for staff to apply a bed and chair alarm. The care plan failed to include the interventions for the physician's ordered bed and chair alarm, so they were not applied. The care plans were immediately updated, licensed nursing staff were educated and reeducated on thorough physician's orders follow-through, including care plans. There were audits in place, supervisors to monitor the 24-hour report for any order changes. Then we go to the fourth section, which is quality of life, and that is FTAG 677. So activities of daily living, also called ADLs, the care provided for dependent residents. We had two residents. One resident had nails that were jagged, long, and dirty, and another resident had no oral care done. Both residents' needs were met immediately. Reeducation again for all nursing staff on personal grooming to include oral hygiene. Random audits will be completed by charge nurses on every floor daily to ensure all this is being done. And the fifth area, which is quality of care, which is FTAG 684. There was a resident who had noted several scratches and skin tears on both arms that have scabbed over. There was no documentation that the facility assessed the skin breakdown, nor did the facility initiate any protective measures for residents' arms. We immediately corrected that. We had, jerry sleeves were immediately placed on the resident, care plan was updated, reeducation by staff on implementation and updating care cards, and two random audits are being done by charge nurses on each unit to ensure preventative skin interventions are followed through. FTAG 686 is the treatment and services to prevent heel pressure ulcers. A resident had a physician's order for offloading heel protectors. When the resident is in bed to prevent pressure sores on his heels, they are to be applied. The resident was observed in bed with heels directly on the bed. The protective boots that offload were on his table. Heel protectors were immediately placed on the resident. Supervisors are monitoring, monitoring the 24-hour report. Reeducation of all staff on implementing and following interventions identified on care cards. Two random audits will be completed daily to ensure this preventative skin interventions are followed through. Two random audits will be completed daily to ensure this preventative skin interventions are followed through. FTAG six eighty-nine, free accidents, hazards, super, and supervision of devices. A resident had an order for a pull tab alarm, um, to the resident and their wheelchair. Something that goes on the wheelchair and then attaches to their clothing. The resident was at risk for falling according to the care plan. The resident was observed by a surveyor, sitting in the wheelchair and not having the pull tab alarm attached. Resident, another resident had skin tears to the right lower extremities. The incident report that had been completed, completed, revealed the resident was to wear protective sleeves to bilateral lower extremities at all times. Physician's order was obtained to protect, for protective sleeves, which are jerry legs, um, to be applied at all times. The resident was observed by a surveyor, sitting in a wheelchair without the jerry legs applied. And the last, the third one is residents who was just admitted back in, um, actually, back in twenty thirteen, had a care plan that identified himself as using tobacco. Policy was not followed to show that the resident had a smoking evaluation completed until twelve fourteen of twenty eighteen during the survey. There was also no documented advice to show that the interdisciplinary meeting was held to determine whether or not the resident was independent smoker as per our policy. So again, the pull tab, tab was immediately attached. Jerry sleeves were put on, the smoking evaluation was completed. Reeducation to all nursing staff regarding the implementation of identified interventions, um, listed on the care card. Alarm placement and safety interventions will be audited by nursing staff on each unit, every shift, daily. The social service department will ensure that smoking evaluations have been completed on all smokers. Evaluations will be reviewed quarterly and at significant change. Six ninety-five, FTAG six ninety-five is respiratory tracheostomy and suctioning. So a resident had an order for oxygen to be delivered via nasal, nasal cannula at two liters per minute. Resident did receive the O2, but the humidifier bottle and the tubing were not labeled. So the respiratory equipment immediately placed and labeled for the resident, nursing staff is to be reeducated on the policy entitled supplying and storing and replacement of O2 equipment. Supervisors will conduct random audits two times a week. Nursing staff will audit respiratory equipment and interventions every shift. And finally, we have FTAG seven hundred, which are bed rails. For bed rails for years, it's been, you can't use bed rails, you can use bed rails, you can't, now you can again. But the problem is, we started a little too late. We had started this about three months prior to the survey and did not have all the side rail, um, information that we needed. So we had two residents that were in bed with side rails in the upright position. There was no documentation to support that an assessment was completed for the side rail use or that a risk and benefits of the side rail's use was reviewed or that an informed consent was obtained from the resident's responsible party prior to the use of the side rails. So the side rails' consents were immediately obtained for both residents. Reeducation for all staff. Charge nurses on the unit will conduct an audit for each resident using side rails to ensure that they have a consent and evaluation on the chart. Signed consents will be obtained and side rail evaluations will be completed by January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. Like I said, this was begun before survey. Had we had all our ducks in a row, it would have been completed. All results, all result, results from the audits will be discussed at our QUAPI meeting, which is held monthly, and we will be looking at all the audits and reviewing them. Right now, Melissa Schaefer, our QUAPI nurse, looks at these audits daily. It's overwhelming, but we do what needs to be done to make sure this does not happen again. We are looking at different things to make sure this doesn't happen again. Dawn has been working on the position control so that we can make sure that consistent employees are on each unit. And that for, um, is with the continuity of care. If you know where you're going and you know your residents, you know what they need. If I get sent to a floor that I'm not really sure and I have to keep going back to a book and, and maybe it's not on there, it's hard. We're holding everyone accountable to do their jobs. But to do that, we have to find them a better way to, to complete it. We need an updated electronic health records. The care plans, that was a problem. If we had an electronic health record system that starts on admissions and creates a care plan from the medical records, maybe we wouldn't have had this. Order issues. We currently have order issues, which I brought up last time I was here. An order can be put in electronically, but when the nurses go to print it out, it is missing. So they are doing three times the work. We need something that has a free flow of information, that starts in admission. Medical records get uploaded, it carries through. The nurses don't have to put information in six or seven times. It shouldn't have to take them hours to complete one task. There's RELIAS training, which we've been working on. We've had that system for about three years and we're just now getting soon the ability to use it. So what it does is it's on a tablet. Um, the employees can go on, take their education courses, and they get quizzed on it. And we can see how competent they are in what they do. But if you look in your book, in your folders, you can see the first page is the entrance checklist. So that is what the surveyors come in. It's back and front and they want within an hour, two hours, within days. So we have to have this ready. One of the things that is on here is, um, an eight seventy-two, which has to be done very quickly so that they know what they're looking at and gives them all the information. The census condition, it's in there, it's behind the matrix. It took six hours and six of us to complete this because our computer system, it's on the back of, you'll see this one. Oh, it's, it's further in the envelope, I'm sorry, in the folder.
All right, wait, let's.
It's toward the end.
What's the face sheet?
It's the face sheet, says matrix. So the one side shows the matrix, which is based off the CASPER report. But the resident census is what we had to do manually because our computer system does not do this. It was handed back to us after one time and we had to tweak it because the Department of Health wasn't happy.
So can we just slow this down for a minute?
Sure.
So the resident census, this is what they're using as their assessment when they come in?
Well, this is something they require that we have to hand to them. Most computer systems, it's a push of a button and this is all filled in from all the units. We had to get these from all the units, make sure they were accurate, and total them by hand. This matrix is what comes. That shows equality measures. That's what they see before they come into Grace Dale. And again, that's sixteen units, six hundred and eighty-eight possible people that had to be done manually on.
Are you ready? Oh, I'm sorry, does, are you, are you finished with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, then, Mr. Beetz. Go ahead, Warren.
So then, they decide pre-admission, which people are gonna start the survey with? So then you get a list when they walk in?
No.
Or they just head out?
They just head out. They know this prior to coming in, who they're gonna start with. And from there, it could blossom into more and more, what they see.
I'll have more, so I'll share the time.
What does the training look like, you know, for, for either new hire or, or ongoing?
They go on, um, you get your orientation. If you're a nurse's trainee, it's about three weeks you get there, then you go on to the units where you're monitored. Staff all gets the same education. You get signed off on it, that you know it, and then.
So, so, what is that education and how, how are they getting it?
Um, if you're talking for the whole year, it's on paper. So they, um, get something, an in-service binder, and it's their job that they do monthly to read it and then sign off on it. And that's how we keep track of it. It is overwhelming paperwork.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get that, so, I mean, I guess they're just self-testing and deciding that they did it? Or, or is there, is it a classroom where you could see that they did it, you know, that they didn't go home and?
In the initial one, yes. So when you're a new person, yes. But when you've been on the floor, you get the binder and you read. And if something occurs, you get reeducation. So you go down to staff development and get reeducated. But most of our trainings, we have in-services on lifting and carrying and fire, fire drills. But if you're talking mental health issues, we review it through paperwork.
Now, do you think the paperwork i- is adequate? You know, so, I realize it's, it's different and, and the, the size of employees are, are different. Before the flight department was with now, I was the chief pilot of another flight department. And before that, we used to, all, the chief pilots before had computerized testing. And the first thing I did was dump that. And we had, and again, I realize we're talking, we had fifteen pilots instead of, you know, hundreds of employees. But it, it was much different. You, you know, we had different pilots make different presentations on different scopes of it and talk real-life scenarios, talked about not, you know, how it is in the paperwork, it's how it is at Grace Dale, how it is, you know, here. And, you know, there was definitely a, a change in, in quality and knowledge. How much of that mentality could be, you know, applied here, here at Grace Dale?
Well, I think what's, what we're looking for is with RELIAS to go electronic and then hands-on. So right now, it's hands-on and paper. And if you're having a busy night, but you have to do these in-services, are you really reading them or are you signing your names?
Well, yeah.
But if you're on the computer, you have to do them.
Thank you. Well, I know you have to talk a lot, so. It's an interesting question, and it actually was something that Jen and I discussed, started to discuss this morning in terms of specifically related to mental health training. So, as Jen said, we've had this RELIAS system for three years and it's still not up and running. Uh, although we're finally getting closer to finish line. That will help a great deal with yearly required trainings that all nursing staff have to do and, and for us to track. I said to Jen this morning when we met with, and it, and it won't just be related to mental health, that it will expand from there. I absolutely agree, there needs to be more in-person training. And, and Jen also agrees. The prior culture was, you would have a required training and maybe not everybody felt they really had to attend. And so one of, one of the reeducation pieces related to the, to this Department of Health survey, we, we let Dawn know she could tell her folks if you can't work until you do this. Because this is critical to our residents' care and safety and well-being. And so, um, that, we are going to get to that. We're peeling back the, the onion layers and finding more and more. So I suspect we're probably looking at maybe six months out from now to be able to really work with staff development and come up with a, a really good, um, improved way of, of doing that moving forward, which. No, I'm saying, sort of taking a, a fresh look at our, um, staff development curriculum for ongoing training. They do, they, and those folks are great. They, they do a phenomenal job and orienting our new staff, um, it, it's tremendous. I mean, there's, what, seven, eight hundred employees at Grace Dale. It's not an easy task to get these folks retrained on a yearly basis. So now that Jen is, is our interim, uh, person, we are, we're able to take a look at things that, that we couldn't before. And that's one of them, but I don't see that really happening, Mr. Hackman, for probably about six months.
Uh, Mr. Warner's gonna ask you, you're done, but the RELIAS you're talking about, system, what is holding us up from going online with that?
Well, uh, Jen maybe can answer some of that. There, there were IT issues. There were issues with the prior administration. Uh, when, when Liz Kelly came on board, she really sort of helped us kind of, at least get it back on the table. And, and the simple thing of every employee at Grace Dale needing an email address, they didn't all have them. And that took months. And then we have email addresses, but we need them uploaded into a RELIAS. Oh, you have to do that manually. Oh, wait a minute, we think there's a way we can do it electronically. And, and the folks that Jen has worked with are great. There's, like all of us, they're not always communicating with each other and so things, uh, things don't work out as planned. Cedar Brook has RELIAS, I am told.
I would say this, I don't wanna speak for the executive, but based on what I've seen so far, I think he, and I'm not gonna speak for all of council, I think our attitude would be, do whatever you have to do, push whoever you have to push, lean on whoever you have to lean on, but let's get the system going.
Well, we've made more progress in the last couple of months than.
Good.
Last three years, so we're, we're, we're getting somewhere. There's just a lot of places that we have to push.
By the way, IT, the new IT people gave us a wonderful presentation about how sweet and good they are and nice and how they're gonna handle every situation. Here's one you can hand them to handle.
And listen, the folks who help us.
I understand, I understand. I understand.
And look, I, I, no criticism to the IT folks at the moment, um, that we, that I.
Sometimes, you know, there are times when people on council administration aren't on the same page or there's the, you know, the, the administrators. I think we're in a unique situation now. We know Grace Dale, the voters spoke on Grace Dale some time ago. Who knows what'll happen after we're all long gone from these positions? But for now, they want Grace Dale. And, um, so the idea is we seem to all be on the same page and you don't seem to have this become a political issue.
Right.
Which unfortunately, it hasn't years in different times. Uh, I, I think everybody here is on board with saying, you know what? That this happened, it was the past, we wanna see it move forward. And the remedies, whatever needs to be done. And I, I understand, I'm not picking on IT, I was just, uh, being a little lighthearted on a very serious issue. Mr. Warner.
I'm not scared to pick on people.
All right, go ahead. Be my guest, pick on them.
First of all, Jen, I'm not, I'm not gonna yell you, you know that.
She appreciates it, Mr. Warner.
Because she's very dry and she needs more of a speaking.
Please don't be so nervous, see, don't worry about him.
This is, this isn't about you, but this is about a failure in a number of things that took place, including a dashboard debacle that went on for months that we relied to in misrepresented information. And I'm really upset about that. Second thing is, we've put our heart and souls in making sure Grace Dale has been functioning over the last five years well. We finally got into the black and now we find out we have some problems again. I was under the impression that medication controls were set up on each floor so that there wouldn't be problems. Is that still?
Yes.
In effect?
Yes.
Is it functioning?
Yes. And, and we did well with our med passes and medications were no problem.
Okay, well, that.
It was the care planning.
Okay, it was the care planning, okay. Now, we were also told wound care referrals and the wound care team was in place. I'm gonna ask you, as I had many times some other people, is that okay? Are we still good?
We are on an uptick in wounds right now, which was gonna be in two weeks' report. I actually have Candy here, who.
Well, let's have Candy come up.
That's a good idea.
Before we rip.
This is our clinic coordinator, so she is in.
And her name?
Is Candace.
Candace.
Hi, you can call me Candy. So we've had a recent uptick in win, in our wounds. Looking into that with the treatment team, we are trying to combat those as soon as we are aware of them. We have a lot of new admissions coming in with more than one area. We just had a gentleman come in, um, with five areas. He was with us for a few days, was rehospitinated and came back with four more. So one person has nine wounds, pressure wounds.
Can I jump on that?
Sure.
So are you starting to at least identify who's coming in versus who's developing there?
Right.
Cause that never seemed to be clear when they gave us.
Right, so we do, we do keep track of who acquires them in-house, who acquires them from outside the facility, whether it be on admission or readmission. So we do keep track of that. Um, we are trying to put measures into place that, um, as soon as someone starts declining, they're sent to physical therapy, maybe for strengthening, positioning, upgrade the mattress, offload heels, implement boots, turning and repositioning, um, because changes in status can occur quite quickly.
Mr. Warner has the floor. He wants to see someone.
How long have you been doing this now with us?
Um, I've been working at Grace Dale since November twenty-seventh of two thousand.
Of two thousand. And how many people on the wound care team?
There are three full-time and currently we're working on bringing the full-time three-to-eleven position, day shift.
What about the, I'll call it the second shift. I always call it the third. Three-to-eleven, what about three-to-eleven?
So three-to-eleven, there is no treatment team on that shift?
No treatment team. No treatment team. I've been told that...
We used to have one.
Yes.
And she went to day shift.
Okay.
And they have been unable to fill the position.
Okay, that answers a valid question that was misrepresented in the past, okay? This, okay, the, the other thing I would ask is that the, the training, the legacy program, are you in training people to that?
So, currently, we're working on training LPNs to stage wounds. LPNs can evaluate, according to the Nurse Practice Act, they cannot assess. RNs can only assess. So, we've changed all our documentation regarding wound evalu, to evaluation.
You, when did you change that?
That has been changed for about three years.
Okay.
Three, three-and-a-half years. I changed that back in October, November of two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
Right now, we're working on training the LPNs. I usually see around two LPNs from the floor. We're starting with day shift right now, full-time. They follow treatment team four hours. And one of those has to be the wound round day. So, they also get experience with the nurse practitioner. They see a multitude of different types of wounds, whether they be pressure, surgical, trauma, things like that. But they get four hours, and I get them two days in a row. And they have to complete certain competencies before they get signed off.
Okay, so, how many people in the pipeline do we have to take over for those shifts that we don't have?
So, for a total of LPNs?
Well, anyone that can handle the wound care team.
So, for total wound care team?
Yes.
We have three wound care full-time day shifts.
And how many do you have that you're talking to that you would like to put them on that team?
Oh, we're training all LPNs and all of Greysdale to at least get the basic concepts of assess, you know, of evaluating and measuring areas properly.
All right.
And to implement correct treatments.
Okay, thank you for that. Just one more thing. I shared with Mr. McGee and Mr. Lot, I apologize for not sharing with everyone, I have a picture of a board of vacancies at Greysdale as you come down the tunnel, okay? Is that board still loaded with vacancies?
No.
Is it, is it getting better? How much, please, come up. I wanna know how much better. Because the problem...
Please introduce yourself when you come in.
Yes. The problem is that we don't have, we are not getting accurate information about how many people we have on staff, how many people are coming in, how many people are taking care of these things which cause deficiencies.
My name is Dawn. I'm the director of nursing. Currently, the reason for those positions is because we are doing certain reallocations of positions. We have lots of people that are floaters, as Jen was saying. Floaters being that they just go wherever, they don't stay on certain units. The reason there were so many positions is because we're reallocating them to a certain position once, or a certain floor. Once they're on that certain floor, then their other position will be released. So, therefore, it's all about moving the positions because we're using...
So, this goes back to moving those people on a floor so they get acquainted with those residents?
Absolutely.
And that works out far better for you, for everyone?
One hundred percent.
And do you have adequate people in this, in the pipeline to do that now?
We are working on it.
Okay, define working.
What we're doing is the folks that are currently, like, we have some...
Could you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
She can't hear you. Yeah, would you please speak into the mic so everybody can hear you?
We have new folks that we're bringing on board. We're interviewing quite a bit all the time. The people that are there now, some are going from part-time up to full-time, some are per diem, going up to either part-time or full-time. So, the per diems, we just had a big change in that, that they only had to work one day every six months. So, we, we changed that now. So, they have to work four days in a month. So, they're giving us more hours. Therefore, you know, it, again, provides that continuity.
Okay, you know, you, and the reason, the only reason I'm asking that is that we have sat here and heard for months, if not years, that more people are coming in, more people are being trained. We're gonna be there, we're gonna be there. And I've asked no less than a million times about the wound care team. And, and we still seem to be inadequate in those, and I'm not, there's no blame here.
No, that's okay.
None whatsoever. We're still missing many vacancies. The Relias, the Relias, how do you say it? Relias system?
Relias.
We've had that for how many years?
Three.
Three years. Are you familiar with that system?
I am not, but she's, again, I've, I've only been here about five or six months. And, you know, as soon as I knew we had it...
You have to come up to speed on that also.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Most, most facilities, whether it's acute care or long-term, have an electronic. And, and I agree with you one hundred percent. Pushing papers is not gonna work in doing a computer system. However, if you're educated and you do the basics on the computer, you do that, you know, the competency online is like a little test. But then, we take you out and we say, okay, you've, you've read this, you've done this online, do me a return demonstration, which means they actually do it with our staff development.
Okay, I wanna point out, I did a little fast timeline, and this will be my last question so you guys don't get bored, okay? It started in October of two thousand and seventeen when citations began, okay? And then, it went into June, it went into September, and also in October. But the crap hit the fan on December fourteenth of two thousand and eighteen. All of a sudden, everything seemed to fall apart. Is there any kind of, I don't know if I'm asking a bad question or not, but...
I don't know what that date was.
Yeah, what does that mean?
On all these sheets.
They're talking about the data.
They're talking about the, on the surveys, yeah.
Premier survey.
When they did that, okay, when that was done, okay, all these things came to fruition, okay? How many people were being, I mean, were you guys in on anything that was happening? I mean, were you aware of how many deficiencies that you might get hit with? I know you did that, what was a mock, whatever it was, okay?
Mock did not...
The mock show, did not show you anything?
It showed us a few things, but nothing in comparison to what really was there when they did the survey. When they did the actual, the Department of Health actually came in, the mock survey was from Premier.
So, the mock didn't do anything for you?
It gave us a few deficiencies, which we worked on, but again...
Okay.
And, and I just wanna re-educate what Jen had said about the Contata and Mr. McClure. The Contata system, that EHR, electronic medical record, is, is, it's archaic. Our nurses still document on paper, which I don't know of any other place that does that. Where if we had a new EMR, we would, they would type it in. The physicians still write on paper. So, I really think that Contata and, and the EMR is a big contributor to care plans to...
Well, is that what the, excuse me, is that what the Relias is going to take the place of?
No, Relias is education.
So, so are we, are we tackling the Contata? Or is that being addressed?
Yes.
All right. No, we need to che, remove the Contata, is that...
Correct. We need to remove Contata because that, that leaves us, everybody's still doing manual, everything. Our, our care plans, which we, we got dinged on, our care cards, which we got dinged on, all that would be, again, like Jen said, a push of a button if we got a new EMR.
Okay, so, so within, can we say, so that it takes a little, let's let some pressure off. That if, if this council helps you get to the replacement for the Contata, and within six months, you guys are working hard at training and doing what you have to do, could we possibly see some results that might make this better?
One hundred percent.
I hate one hundred percent when people say that.
One hundred percent, you will say results.
A result, okay.
I didn't say one hundred percent, that will be, who am I? I said one hundred percent.
Very good.
I'm trying to make you laugh, that's all I'm doing. A hundred percent's not a good no. It's okay.
Here comes Sis, she's gonna save 'em.
I'm very passionate about Greysdale and what goes on there because for months, we as council live by what they tell us.
Yes.
We don't visit, well, I, I go up once in a while.
If you want to walk with the company, we'll...
No, I, I was up there enough for a lot of reasons. But the fact is that when we're sitting here and you tell us things, we believe you.
Yes.
And for months, we sat here and we believed what was going on. And now, now we're getting hit with, well, this stuff doesn't work and that stuff doesn't work. Please, let's not do that again. Let's fix something here.
We, we, I don't think, I, I also, I think, like Mr. McClure, pride myself on being transparent. And I always tell my folks and always have, I can't help fix a problem that I don't know exists. And...
I agree with you.
Absolutely.
I was off for getting rid of some situations months ago.
Sure. So, and, and, you know, everything's easier and to see and clearer in hindsight. And, and in hindsight, we, we can see even more with Premier than, than we knew about. And now that they are one hundred percent out of it, we have very quickly come to discover a lot of things. Contata was not, I realized that became an issue at the end of, probably around October. But not enough that I knew we could potentially get a new chronic health record until after the budget process was done. That just is a learning curve for me. So, you know, when Dawn says you will see results, you will see results. And one of the things we'll talk about, maybe at the next Human Services meeting, if not the one after, because we are working on it, is position control, which is every position that is approved and budgeted for at Greysdale. And honestly, I've heard from our HR folks that Dawn is the first person frankly intelligent enough to try to tackle this problem. And, and intelligent doesn't even begin to, to articulate what it really takes to tackle this report. But Dawn has essentially figured out how many staff of each kind that she needs on each unit, every day, every shift, to run Greysdale.
Now, now, here's the thing, okay, this whole thing, and this is what it comes down to. We've taken on the task of running Greysdale.
Yep.
Okay?
Yes.
It's in your lap.
Yes.
And council's going to try to help you as mu, at least I believe they are, as much as they can, okay?
I believe so.
Here's the problem, okay? Whatever you're doing, whatever problems arise or whatever happens, bring it here and put it out on the table for us so we know what's going on. It's not something you welcome. The people that hid the stuff, the people that didn't talk about things, or they made up fake charts or whatever they did, okay? We don't need that.
Nope.
We have too much at stake. First of all, Greysdale was lucky enough to get the IGT money to help it float.
Absolutely.
And we've got some other things in it, in the workings that are gonna help the people, the volunteers. But the more important thing is that it's gotta run properly, and those people have to be taken care of.
Yes.
And those numbers are critical, as you know, for the subsidies that come in. So, I just hope you come, I'm done. You just, you come back and bring that.
No, it's, it's the questions, and I've told, I've told people this before. It's, it's the questions from council that help us, help us prepare, and, and, and so, I appreciate that.
Well, let me just say, Sue, and I, it's, you know, what happened, it's, it's happened. Like, as Mr. Warner said, I think it's important going forward that we have full disclosure. And I know, having served on council and been in an administration, that sometimes for employees, they feel pressure, I should, we can't really go to them, we have to go through. I don't think this is the right thing. I would hate to ever hear of an employee that got fired or dismissed or, or anything done to them because they decided to say, hey, you know what? Something's wrong here and no one's listening. Now, I'm not saying that would happen here. I don't, I can only say, I know that has occurred. I can say that clearly. Let me finish.
Yeah, sorry.
And, and I don't think it will happen now. But I, I think that's important for employees to hear now and then. Because there are people who will sometimes in the system, in the bureaucracy system, will say, well, if you do this, and they don't have the authority to say that to you. And, and they'll sort of play on that. If, 'cause, you know, some of you have been here a long time, and I'm not, you know, you may have seen things and they may have made, said, hey, you can't go through this channel, go through that. And that's important. I'm a big believer in going through channels. But if you go through all the channels and things aren't happening, you know, sometimes, since we have the money purse, we're the ones. But if I may just complete this, I'm glad, thank you for coming forward now, and I'm glad we had this meeting today. We had, had the time so far to discuss this. We, for a long time, and you know this, Mr. McClure, a big push was made about Greysdale being financially independent, secure, independent. And there were times when we got more money from the state going way back, and they'd go to other departments. And I, I was a very vocal advocate of wanting Greysdale to stay a public institution. But I understood something in the process as both a representative and a taxpayer. I mean, I'd have to pay some money for it. And the things you've mentioned here, I had two, two loved ones who were in private nursing, well, one was at Greysdale, one was private nursing home. Some of the things you're saying happen in the private homes, it just doesn't get discussed at an open meeting. And, and that's where people are pushed and told what you're gonna say or what shift you'll be put on if you do say it. So, I'm, I'm glad we're having this discussion. And, and I, and I think it's important. And I, I actually am gonna cede the executive and then to anyone else who has questions. I have two questions and on the old dashboard, specific questions before we leave.
Sir...
Because I, I, it's very important to me, these two issues.
Sir, I appreciate very much your desire for people to be able to speak freely. And to that end, I don't think, I've served here for a long time, you did many years before me. I don't think anyone's ever seen as much transparency on Greysdale as we have come forward here tonight and offered up. I mean, Jen stood here and put all of our dirty laundry out on, on the line and then told you how it was being cleaned up. There, there's never been more transparency. You have our pledge that we will continue to be this transparent even when it's painful. You have our pledge on that. With, with that said, we don't wanna encourage insubordination because one of the things that, we don't want people hearing a clarion call from county council to, to grind axes. Because one of the things that we've had difficulty with is getting folks in line. And getting them, getting, getting them to do their job.
That's why we wanna have them good pay for their job because, union or no union, and I'm, I'm very big a union person, you took the job, we're gonna get you the pay you need. Mr. Warner said, we're gonna get you the resources. But that's why I said, go through your proper channels.
I think Dawn and Jen will tell you they like working with the unions. I think, I think it streamlines their job, I do.
Employees have a responsibility. I, I have no problem with that.
And just to reflect on Mr. Warner's point, nobody who, I haven't, and no one who works for me has ever misrepresented any fact knowingly to county council about Greysdale. I, I just wanna make sure that's clear. I wanted to make sure you weren't talking about us. Mr. Brian Dunlap is here. And I know Jen wanted him to speak with me, is that okay? He has a, he has a piece of this that I think is...
Can I, can I ask my questions?
Sure.
He can. Lori has questions that she's been writing here.
If you can answer them, I don't care.
I don't know how long she's been writing, but Lori, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. And again, tonight's not the night to answer them. We have a Human Services meeting in two weeks. Maybe you wanna research them for then. Sure. Candy, I wanted to ask more questions about wound education, but maybe we should take more time at Human Services to address those. So, what I'm more interested in hearing about is the actual process, how many people are being educated. And like, the thought of three people on the team, like, and this is for everybody, how much shared governance is involved with Greysdale staff? When I work, like, you don't just have a director. How much ownership are people taking at every single level? Whether I'm a CNA, I'm in the kitchen, how much of that is infused across all job titles? That everybody, the transport person could see something. And so, that's just something maybe you wanna address in two weeks. For Dawn and anybody else, the idea of the competencies and how they're being now with us involved, how are we determining what competencies need to be met at each and every job level for each and every patient and at each and every level? And then, how are those going to be educated? Because I thought that we hired someone and we approved a position for someone who was gonna manage that in HR and make sure people were getting their education and were meeting their competencies. Did we not approve that position this year?
That does not sound...
All right, maybe I'm mistaken, but I just thought there was somebody...
We have an HR person over there.
No, I thought there was a position we hired or somebody, and I thought it was for Greysdale specifically. I could be wrong. But, but who's gonna be managing that? And who's gonna be identifying how to do that? Because again, when I was in a hospital, I knew when summer was coming, we were doing our, our sunscreens. And we were getting our meds and sunscreens and what's the wrong ones and the right ones. And every, every month, we had a different education on something, whether it was three questions or twenty. So, how's that being infused in the new plan? The EMR training? How much time is it gonna take to get people up to speed if it's purchased?
Less time than it is to continue workarounds that we've done with Contata for years.
Sure, but still, there's gonna have to be a learning curve. So, like, giving us an idea about how that's gonna be infused. Again, I just think competencies all the way around is what I heard. And staff morale, how's the morale versus the teamwork? Because again, I don't, I personally, eleven dings isn't great. You've got two hundred and seventy people. I'm not excusing that. But comparatively, it was good. And, and you get it to zero. You do what you have to do. So, what are the identified areas that you're gonna focus on and work on as a whole, as a team, regardless of what the survey is? Because you know the next time they're coming, they're completely looking at something else.
Right.
They're not gonna give a hoot about that, they're gonna be looking at this. And so, how do you stay ahead of that curve? And just, my, my feeling has always been, provide excellent care. And if you're all happy providing excellent care, we won't have any discrepancies. And so...
Did you keep a, you have notes on all the things you just...
I did, I do.
Maybe we could get that from you instead of watching the playback.
I have them, I have, I...
That way, we can come prepared next month. I, Jen was going to try to scribble notes, but...
And then, my last comment is just, I mean, again, why don't we hold that? Because I don't wanna keep people hostage all night. You have time to look at it, think about it. But I just don't want there to be a distortion factor. Because everybody's like, oh, see, I knew Greysdale was a mess. because everybody's like, "Oh, see, I knew Grace Dale was a mess. The county had it." We've had it for a month and a half, two? Let's just make it right. And whatever you need to do from us.
Yeah.
We've always had it.
Well, we, without Premier's management of it, I'll correct my statement because I'm not going to hold these people accountable, you know, for something that was not their policy decision to make. And so, now it is ours. So, what do we need to do to make it different and better? And especially with these wound things, because people are going to have wounds. She just said, "How many do they come in with?" "How are we going to make it better? How are we going to make it heal faster? What else do we need to do?" And then also, tell us what you did well, because I think we're so, like, I like hearing, "There were no medication issues. Are there med reconciliations? How did you do on admissions? Were there any family complaints?" Like, tell us what you did well, too. Let's not just focus on the deficiencies. So, thank you.
We will come prepared for Human Services with all of those things. And, and I think if we, if you'll, if you have five minutes, report, Brian, to kind of touch on one of those pieces, actually.
Can I, can I ask you if you could check, when you come back to the Human Service, you're going to answer specific questions? I have two specific questions, which you don't have to do tonight. I don't want to save you time. But when I looked at, and I don't know now what's true or not true, so I'm just going to throw it out there. The last dashboard we got, quality measures, pain, long-term, the benchmark was 6%. We were at 11.16. Antipsychotic medication utilization, the benchmark was 14.7. We were at 21.93. Now, I, I would appreciate it if those are two areas you could, having had parents in, in nursing home and situations, I was always concerned with the overuse of medication and particularly pain. And also with the hospital. I'd be interested at some point to get into that because I know, at a personal experience with a loved one, where they went to the hospital and then talking to other people, relatives, with other people in nursing home, they were worse with bed sores when they came back from the hospital than when they went. And then the people, the relatives thought this is their nursing home, when instead, it was the hospital being extremely careless with, with these elderly patients. So, and, and the bottom one is, how many people do we have now in the census over there?
665 today.
You have one of the largest nursing homes.
Under one roof.
Under one roof, anywhere around. All right, the largest in PA. And when people were, were going on about dumping and selling and whatever they wanted to do, they'd always bring up these 120 or 200-bed nursing homes and they'd try to make a comparison. There's no comparison. So, so it's a big challenge. Don't get me wrong. And I don't, I don't mean to, to say, you know, I think you felt the passion, though.
Right.
If we're going to keep the nursing home and if it's going to stay a county home, we know we have to do what we have to do. I know the executive knows that. We know that. And I don't know if there was ever, there may have been mixed messages at some point, but I want my message and probably most people's, their message to be clear. We're going to have to do what we want to do. Otherwise, we shouldn't have a nursing home. I think we should have one, and I don't have a red line in the sand on cost. I don't want to, I think we should all want to look at the cost of everything. But I think tonight was a good night despite the circumstances. I thank you. And you have, do you have any other questions before the, come on up, Sarah. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. I'm Brian Dunlap. I'm the lead accountant and the administrator in training. I'm here to go over, this should be in all your packets. It's just three pages stapled together, some Excel spreadsheets titled summary comparison. I believe it might actually have a green tab on there.
Oh, yeah.
So, to your point, Mr. Heckman, you know, Grace Dale is a very large facility, not only for our area but for our state. And what these schedules are doing is trying to really kind of break down and put us more on a comparison field to other facilities. So, for instance, this first page here, it lists 15 other facilities within the state, within our area and outside of our area, their location. The next column over is their current star rating. Next to that is their number of licensed beds and then the date of their most recent survey. And then everybody is listed top to bottom by their number of deficiencies, the least amount up top with the most down at the bottom. The next column over, what that's doing there is saying, what size, according to their licensed beds, are they compared to Grace Dale? So, for instance, the first facility has 44 beds. They are 6% our size. The following column then takes our 11 deficiencies and multiplies that by their size percentage to essentially say, if we were 6% our size, our 11 deficiencies, what would that look like? So, for instance, it would be one for a facility that's 6% our size. For a facility that's a third our size, it would be four. The next column over, what that does is then it says, okay, if we were a third our size with four deficiencies based on the current 11 we received, how did we do compared to that actual facility during the most recent survey? And if you go down that column, a positive number means that that facility performed better than we would have during this analysis. And a negative number means that Grace Dale would have performed better during this analysis. We have five facilities, or, sorry, rather, four facilities that would have performed better, one that would have been exactly on the same playing field as us, and 10 where Grace Dale would have performed better, according to this analysis, based on the size percentage. If you'll go to the next page, what this is doing, this is the same 15 nursing homes, but also includes Grace Dale within this calculation. Again, it's the facility name, their location, their number of licensed beds, along with the date of their most recent survey and the number of deficiencies on that most recent survey. What this schedule is showing in the final column is, based on the number of deficiencies and their number of licensed beds, how many deficiencies are they averaging to the number of beds? So, for instance, when we look at Grace Dale, we had 11 deficiencies, but compared to our size, that's one deficiency per 66 beds, or 63 beds, rather. Where, if you look in this listing of 16 facilities, were the fifth best in that listing according to the number of deficiencies, oh, sorry, the, the number of licensed beds per deficiency. If you go to the last page, this is looking at the star rating detail for each of the same 15 facilities as long, including Grace Dale, so it would be 16. Again, location, number of licensed beds, most recent survey date. But what this is doing is giving greater detail on the star rating. So, there is different categories to the star rating, which is health inspection, staffing, and quality measures, each with a 1 to 5 rating. And then the overall rating, which then you can see is for the entire facility, again, using Grace Dale as an example, the overall two-star rating and the health inspection, staffing, and quality measures. But I would just like to point out with this, it is slightly subjective due to the percentage of homes within the state and how they all perform and where everybody falls. So, for instance, if you look at Grace Dale, we had a two-star for health inspections, a three-star for staffing, and a three-star for quality measures. Now, compared to Fair Acres, which is the largest nursing home in the state of Pennsylvania when you look at licensed bed number, they had the same rating for health inspections, which was a two. They had a one-star better than us in staffing, and they had the same exact star rating for us in quality measures, which means that at the end of this calculation, this facility scored, according to state percentages, a three, which makes them an average facility. And the only difference is that they've received one extra star on staffing. And you can look through the other facilities, but I just wanted to kind of point out there that when you really chunk it down, there isn't, in some cases, a lot that separates homes, but the overall ratings can be different.
All right. Thank you for the statistics.
You're welcome.
I, I think it's important, but at the same time, we, we want to be sure every family member's person is that most important person and, and doesn't factor into any stats. But, but I do appreciate how you did that. Are there any other questions or any discuss, Mr. Dietz?
Just real quick. So, obviously, Premier wasn't leading, you know, Grace Dale and at least not leading it in a direction to, to improve or get better. Was there anything that they specifically held back or blocked or prevented, you know, other people in Grace Dale and administrative positions from doing things that they thought could improve it or, you know?
No, I, I don't, I don't know of anything that, that Premier did to, to block us moving, moving forward.
And I mean, like, did we have any ideas, you know, throughout the system that, you know, someone may have tried to pass up or should have or that could have improved or, or fixed or prevented these things from happening?
I think that unfortunately, it was not, some of these things did not become clear until towards the end of the year, not, not necessarily related to the deficiencies, but, but Premier-related problems, you know, right around the time when they were going to be exiting anyway. And it was really probably November, December, and, and January that some of these things have started to present themselves more evidently. But, but I don't, I don't, they, they certainly didn't.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I didn't mean that they were purposely, you know, doing anything. But I mean, just that if someone had ideas, you know, even if they were running it bad, you know, if someone else could have, you know, stepped up and corrected it before, they, you know, Premier didn't lead us on it.
I, I think, you know, I can only speak for myself, not, not for the Grace Dale folks. Being new, I certainly did everything I can to learn, but it's obviously, I mean, Grace Dale's a huge learning curve. But I relied on what I presumed to be the expertise of, of Premier. And, you know, in hindsight, I wish I hadn't, although I, you know, so, but I can't speak for the folks at Grace Dale. But I think it just was a matter of circumstances.
And in fairness to you, Sue, I mean, the rationale, I understand the rationale for bringing in a private company back when the institutional cement of management back in the day that refused to look at any new idea or any, any possible change sort of brought around a culture of, "We need to shake things up." But now, I know you're bringing it back in, you've brought it back in-house, but we've had this discussion before. Well, we're not going to, that's not going to happen. It's, Grace Dale is important. It's got to thrive, but it's not going to become an institution unto itself like another branch of county government. And I'm, I, I think that's, I think there's a lot here that goes with history and I think you're going to do a great job going forward. I certainly, we all hope for it. And is there any other questions or concerns with these poor people?
Comment.
Go, comment, Mr. McGee.
I didn't speak at all.
Oh, you did not. You get the star tonight.
I just, I just want to thank yous all for presenting tonight. I was very impressed with the professionalism and the knowledge and that you's identified the problems. I hope you can get this electronic record system up and going.
Thank you.
And, and that's, that's all. And actually, I have to commend, I think, I think it's the right move. The administration made the right move for the county by doing this. I, I really do. You know, we, I've already worked with other groups where somebody else is kind of in charge and you kind of got, not like red tape or you just, you trust in their judgment and, you know, and you just feel like you don't really have, I think you guys are, your hands are on it now. And now, you don't have to worry about, so I'm excited about it.
The ownership is, I appreciate that. The ownership is there. I mean, the amazing thing about Grace Dale is the, the level of commitment the staff have always had to our residents, no matter who was, who was, was leading it. But being now, you know, the buck stops at Jen and, and myself, with Jen for now, that's different. That's different than when you have somebody else where, where, you know, the buck stops with them. And, but in that sense, it has absolutely given us then the control or ability to, to look at things differently and see what needs to be changed. And, and the trees are shaking, Mr. Heckman, at Grace Dale.
Well, let me just say, the staff has always been the strong point at Grace Dale. Throughout the years, whether we've disagreed or agreed with the management or with this going that way, that way, one thing was always a rock was the care.
Yes.
I know, talking to families who have had relatives there, and I had, my wife had her mother there at Grace Dale. She was one, she was thrilled with the care she got.
Well, that's always good to hear. You know, we like those stories. And I think the, the key difference now is we have the right people in place and, and the team that, that we have with Jen and Dawn and Wendy and Candy and Melissa and Brian, et cetera, et cetera. I think we have the right group of folks there, and it's obviously going to take us some time. But I think, I told Jen this morning, we've made a tremendous amount of progress in a very short time, but we have a lot of work left to do and we know that, too.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? This no agenda meeting now is starting to wind down, but it was, this, this was, thank you.
Thank you.
It's important we did this tonight. It really is. All right. Any other new business? Seeing none? Council committee reports. Seeing none? Council liaison reports. See, yes.
G CMA, sorry. Talking about the GPA. You want transparency. We have one full completed bridge. Six are awaiting final approval, but they're actually, they're just waiting for PennDOT to sign on the dotted line. 11 are due this year. Next milestone payment is due in April.
Right.
Great. Oh, Ms. Zirinsky?
Yeah, I attended the farmland preservation meeting yesterday. And to date, 16,265.84 acres have been preserved on 193 farms and 18 farms were ranked for the coming year to get into the preservation program.
Cool. Any other liaison reports? Seeing none? Council clerks report?
Nothing.
Nothing? Council solicitors report?
Nothing.
Go home and take cold medicine? Seeing none? I call adjournment. Mr. Dietz?
Second.
We're adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Lori, it was good that we did that tonight. It took a while, but it was good.